You're on mic, Allison.
Got it.
Okay, let's call the Lancaster City Council meeting to order. This is our first virtual meeting. It's sort of like virtual. Virtual really would have been if we were all at home. The reason I know that is because my wife made a very clear point of it. This isn't virtual, because we're here. In response to the Governor's Executive Order N 520, this meeting will be streamed live, and all citizens are strongly encouraged to view the meeting remotely in order to follow state guidelines prohibiting gatherings of over 250 people and federal guidelines recommending against gatherings of more than 10 people. Call it to order. I know I already did that, but the camera didn't catch it. Roll call.
City Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Doris.
Present.
Molly.
Present.
Man.
I'm present.
Vice Mayor Chris.
Present.
Mayor Paris.
Here.
We have a call.
And do we have somebody for the invocation? Who? You're going to do the invocation and you sign, right? That's wonderful.
Okay. Can everybody bow their heads? Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for giving us another day of life. Lord, thank you for bringing us here. Lord, I ask you to help us with this virus coming about into our city. Lord, that you just allow us to overcome any challenges that brings our way, that we as a city stand strong, that we as a city move past this challenge, and that, Lord, you give me also the patience and the nerves to get away so that I'm able to sign correctly so that we get this message out to every single person out there. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you. Councilman Mann, you want to give the pledge?
Sure. Everybody put their right hand over their heart, face the flag, and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, NB1. I guess we don't have to worry about speaker cards, do we?
Well, we have none. Yes, we are taking emails, so if there do pop up, Andrea will be able to handle those. Mayor and Council, thank you. Just before we start, a brief update on our operations and what we've been doing as city staff under your direction. As of, for a number of weeks, we've been tracking the progress of this virus and its impact on our community in preparation for this day. Well, this day has come. And as you know, we've appointed two deputy mayors approximately three weeks ago, a month ago, to help us track this, and we're in daily contact with them, getting advice on a daily basis. And in fact, from the earlier meeting today, they joined us in the EOC, gave our staff a pep talk, shared with them how important it is, the work that they're doing, the work that you're doing, and the work that they're doing at the hospital. So this is a very important day for us. There's a number of resolutions to be approved by the council tonight, and one ordinance to be adopted by the council tonight. As it relates to where we've been and where we're going, where we've been is the EOC is fully operational. That is fully operational from the times necessary. At this point, we're operational from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night. We anticipate that that can change and will change as the event progresses, but we've been working very closely to try to deliver services to those who need services, very focused in trying to deliver communications to those who need to hear what's happening and recommendations on how to proceed with this virus. We're focusing on communicating with the businesses to assure that there's business continuity and that we're identifying ways that we can help them, and most importantly, communicating with council and staff and other agencies, whether it be the hospital, the fairgrounds, the city of Palmdale, other people that are involved in this process and this battle together. It is a challenge, and it is a challenge in a number of different ways. One is that this is a new type of emergency, the one that we haven't faced before, one that we haven't trained for before. The tools that are available to us are the same, though, right? It's using good people that trained in systems to solve problems and figure out solutions. It's also a communication tool. It's an opportunity to communicate, whether we're communicating about a virus or communicating about an earthquake, that communication system is important. So we've identified a one-stop shop, so to speak, for at least local, from a Lancaster perspective, which is the city's website. There's a pop-up that will pop up, so give us your email. We'll be in contact with you on daily messages about what's happening locally. Yesterday, we focused our efforts on what was happening from a political perspective, not only from the state government, the federal government. Today, we focused our energy on the state of emergency that you will be approving tonight, that Rex has also, or the mayor authorized this morning. And then tomorrow, we're looking at that business continuity strategy and identifying how do we help businesses understand what services are available to them. And then as the days progress, that communication strategy will continue to develop as we see challenges forthcoming. A lot of the challenges we're facing are not necessarily associated with the disease locally or the virus locally. They're a result of decisions made by federal government and by the state government that have impacted local businesses specifically and the way we operate as a community. So first and foremost, that's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with a disease yet. We're dealing with the preparation for a disease. As this, I keep calling it a disease, I don't know if it's a disease, as this virus comes forward, this emergency strategy will change from one that is communication to more of an operations, whether it be operations at the hospital from security perspective, traffic perspective, or any alternate locations that we might be seeing, might be seeing challenges. In working closely with the mayor and the statement of the declaration of emergency or the proclamation of emergency, there's a number of different things that we're approving tonight. I'll go over them together, and then we can communicate them all together if you wish. We have NB1, which is the resolution that is confirming and ratifying the existence of a local emergency, approving emergency expenditures, and ordering copy to be forwarded to the LA County OEM and CalOES. As we've mentioned before, this is a process that is, we're one cog in this wheel. We operate in very similar fashions. We communicate our information and our needs to the county, to the state, and to the federal government. So there's a combined effort in this strategy. The mayor this morning set the state of emergency. That is required to be ratified by the council. That's what you're doing tonight in Resolution 2008. Resolution 2009, confirming the emergency regulations for public meetings to mitigate transmission of the COVID, is the exact way we're operating this meeting tonight, limiting access to 10 people, allowing public comment, and working through the process we're working through as we speak. So that resolution allows this to happen tonight. In addition, when we look forward to council meetings, there are opportunities to teleconference council meetings. We are investigating those as it relates to other items that may be coming up that need council authority that does not rest within city staff. So we'll be evaluating that. There may be future council meetings. They will be non-traditional as well, obviously, to keep the spread of the COVID as much as possible. And the Resolution 2010, adopting procedural measures related to the local emergency, and this is a series of actions, the mayor referenced them this morning, is changing the deadlines for non-critical city functions, including but not limited to processing land use and development applications, business licenses, records requests pursuant to the California Public Records Act, and other functions are extended by 30 calendar days for the duration of the local emergency. If you've been to the EOC, you've seen what we're doing in the EOC. It is staff-intensive, and when we have staff of all parts of our departments, we have the responsibility to try to serve everybody. At the same token, we know the primary focus is combating this virus. In light of that as well, we have made steps internally to protect some of our employees that may have, be in the category that may be most impacted by this virus, whether it be health issues or age issues. So staff is limited as well through those mechanisms in protection of our staff as well as their families. All city classes, courses, sports, events, and city facilities and other events serving more than 10 persons are canceled for the duration of the local emergency with this resolution. A 90-day stay on the payment of application fees for all new renewed business licenses required pursuant to Title V of the Lancaster Municipal Code. This is a 90-day delay for business licenses. So in this period of time, you will not need to renew your business license. You can operate as a business without the renewal fee. It'll be a 90-day stay on the issuance of code enforcement, administrative citations, parking citations, and all collection activities associated with such citations shall be implemented upon adoption of the resolution. Now, to clarify, the caveat there is if there is somebody parking in violation of an emergency response, they'll obviously receive the full effort of our enforcement activities, but from the standpoint of street sweeping and other things like that, we're suspending those activities with, or you will be authorizing us to suspend those activities with your approval. City staffs will not conduct in-person meetings for more than 10 persons present. Local businesses are directed similarly to limit persons in meetings of 10 or fewer. So not only are we asking ourselves and doing that for ourselves, we're also expecting and you are also directing the citizens of Lancaster to do the same. Note that we do operate an EOC, and there are more than 10 people in that briefing, but these are emergency response. We understand as emergency responders what that means to us in responding, and in an effort to do that, we must be in a close proximity, no different than nurses are close proximity in an emergency room, or firemen are close proximity, and other emergency workers are in close proximity. We have a responsibility to do that, and we understand the ramifications associated with that. The city hereby authorizes the reprioritization of 2019 community development block grant funds. There are opportunities for assistance through block grant funding that allows city staff to expend funds for those in need. So we're releasing, with this decision, that you're releasing those funds for us to help get food to people, deliver services, other things of that nature that would typically be used for curb, gutter sidewalks in certain areas, but this allows us to serve that population as it relates to food and other things of that nature. And then local grocery stores are directed to set aside two hours each day during which to access the store and be limited to 60 years of age and older. This direction has been received well from our grocery store community. We've been in contact with most of them. A lot of them don't have local authority to make those decisions, but as they look for that local authority, many are making that changes. Albertson's has been successful. We've had a good communication with Costco. Specifically, we had an issue come up from the community that there were some issues with prescription line versus the regular line. They addressed that very quickly, so our stores are understanding that they are part of this network of service. So they've been working very hard on that. We're also keeping a, in our EOC, keeping a inventory of the grocery stores and communication to understand how much they have, how much they need. And in this decision too, we're asking that those that are serving the public, we've had issues where the homeless services went in, or a senior care center, or somebody else went in, and they were limited what they could buy. In this is a direction to say, if you have a service provider that can identify who they are, to not put the same limits you would put on an individual who's buying those goods as well. So that's in this resolution as well. Local grocery and household supply stores are directed to waive any, oh, per household, we just talked about that, and group homes, senior residential, and daycare facilities, and other group living facilities are directed to limit access to staff and necessary vendors only, and to screen all persons for a fever of over 100 degrees prior to allowing them to enter. Such facilities are further directed to assist residents and their families and friends in utilizing telephone, social media, and real-time apps to maintain communication with their family members. This, of course, this is our most vulnerable population. We want to make sure we protect them and make sure that they don't get that access. Those are the resolutions. We evaluated as well an ordinance that is required to be approved by ordinance, which is ordinance number 1073. It's an urgency ordinance of the city council, the city of Lancaster, concerning unlawful detainer proceedings during an emergency, which is, in essence, an eviction. And in the language of that ordinance, the property owner, property manager is restricted from evicting tenants if their eviction is due to payment of rent and a result of an impact of this emergency. And that ordinance is there for you to approve as well. Again, we are prepared and ready as your city staff to meet any need necessary. We have not only the training, the capacity, and all the tools that you have granted us to make this happen. We have a great communication system and great communication staff. We have great relationships with each of our member agencies, whether it be the hospital or others, and we are prepared to handle anything that's thrown at us, and we hope that we can do it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any questions?
I have a couple. You talked about the EOC. We have a lot of people at home don't know what an EOC is. Can you go through that?
Correct, yes. The EOC is the Emergency Operations Center. It involves five different aspects, planning, four different sections, planning, finance, operations, and logistics, as well as administration and communications. So that is really a hub of our first, so in an emergency, we set up the EOC. That is our first incoming call. We'll track everything that runs through there. We'll operate everything that runs through there. So if we need to dispatch a public works vehicle, we dispatch through there, right? And it's a coordinated effort. At the same token, we also communicate up from there. So we communicate to the county agencies, we communicate to state agencies, so that we're all connected in the need, service delivery, and the needs that we identify.
We talked about the triggers, and we've been working on this for a little over three weeks with the deputy mayors as far as the trigger. And it was my understanding that we were, we had, we were on the list to have one case in the city of Lancaster. That was removed, correct?
Correct. So we had always--
Let me comment on that. There is not any question that this disease is in our city at this time. There is no question about that. The reason there's no question about that is because people with symptoms are showing up, people with symptoms who have been exposed are showing up. Part of the problem has been they closed the universities, they closed the colleges. Well, where do you think those kids went when you closed them? They came home. A lot of them live here. So we have a lot of exposed people that have entered into the city. I just, I was talking to Catherine Barker five minutes ago. She is very close to having enough test kits for the Animal Valley, and there will be a procedure so that everybody who needs to get tested will get tested within the next day or two. But up until now, that has not been the case. The hospital has not had enough ability to test people that they wanted to test. They had to get county public health approval, which was most often denied. So I'm satisfied that we moved appropriately, although they did take the, I wish, I wish everybody was more accurate, that, you know, they put somebody on the list, and when we couldn't verify who that was, they just took them off. There has been no explanation as to why that--
I would add that trigger, as much as we had always talked about, the minute there's one, we trigger. At the same token, we don't have one, or at least most recent data, except we have had decisions made by state agencies and county agencies that have necessitated this as well, right? I mean, it necessitates the opportunity for the impacts of some of these decisions that are made. So in the irrespective, this is an important move tonight to minimize the impact as much possible to our community.
And if I'm correct, our deputy mayor stated earlier today that the tests are five days once you're tested to return, and in some cases, seven. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what it is at the moment, because it changes every hour, it seems like. But that will be hastened considerably with the plan that, I'm going to leave it for her to announce, but it just got a lot better. Anyone else? The eviction procedures, I wanted to be clear that this doesn't mean you can quit paying your rent if you can, because you've still got to pay it. I mean, all we're doing is there aren't going to be any evictions during the state of emergency. It doesn't mean that the moment that emergency is over, that you're not going to have to come to some accommodation with your landlord. The other thing I want to caution everybody with is that we have very low tolerance for people being a jerk out there. If you're in a line at the supermarket, you do not want to be the one that causes a fight. Law enforcement is very aware that we cannot allow people to take this to extremes. Have I said enough, Captain? Or did you want to add to that? Okay, good. We have the unofficial No Jerk Ordinance that is being enforced. That's why Marvin's being so nice tonight. No.
That was good. Mr. Cottle, will there be a list--
Maybe we ought to have that ordinance on a regular basis.
Will there be a list of the stores that are participating in the seniors getting? Because one of the issues that came up this morning that I noticed was the seniors, by the time they get to the store, it's already empty. And so I noticed you were saying that it's going to be some type of priority, and I know most stores stock midnight and then early in the morning. So will there be a list on the city website of the stores that are participating that allow the seniors to come in at a certain time, get first priority, get out quickly so that the rest of the community--
Absolutely. So if you go to our website, there's a master sheet, and it'll be a pop-up right away. So you get emails and updates through that message. So we would ask anybody to show up, get there to our website, sign up, because that's where the portal of information is coming out. There are resource sites on there that list resources, not only what grocery stores are being posted and things of that nature, but also, you know, what services are available for business, you know, for your own person, everything else. So we are updating that regularly and daily and often based on information we're receiving. And our Instagram, our Twitter, our other categories like that, whenever we get news at a restaurant or a grocery store is doing that, we post to those sites as well. So there's a lot of resources that we're trying to push out as much information as possible, and, you know, support those businesses who are doing the right thing. That's the reality of it, is we want them to have business, and we want our seniors to be safe, and we want them to have access to the food that they need and things that they need. And they have so far been very positive, very, working very well with us. So it's all good news to report, just when that decision-making process comes from their corporate leaders, we post that right away and share. So I would push everybody to our website and to our Instagram feed and Facebook.
Also, Mr. Chris, could you help explain the rules that have been set in place now with these type of meetings so that people don't think that we are having illegal meetings now that we are screening or--
Yeah. Could you--
I think it'd be more appropriate if the city attorney did it, but--
Yeah, incorrect. So everybody knows in the audience too, or in the watching, Allison is not here, but we've got her on Skype or FaceTime or whatever it is. So she's available--
Hello, everyone.
Hi. Can you explain the suspension of the Brown Act?
Yes. So the Brown Act has been suspended with regard to certain provisions that would require, for example, the council to be in the jurisdiction or in a single room. Instead, the executive order of the governor allows council members to participate remotely in council meetings and to observe social distancing requirements. We're still required to notice public meetings and to put up an agenda and all those usual things, and if we do a telephonic or video council meeting, we'll need to follow the rules regarding roll call votes for all actions, but we can observe social distancing and do video council meetings on a go-forward basis as those meetings are needed.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution NB1, number 20-08.
I'll second their motion.
Let's vote.
You do announce the vote.
I'm sorry. I'm not seeing--
Oh, we got one question.
Sometimes technology's not wonderful. It's approved unanimously.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I think we have to do these.
Mr. Mayor, did you say it was approved unanimously?
We're going to read some questions that the general public has right now.
Good. From James May, what is the protection for staff or more than 10 man per area or per business? I'm not quite sure I understand that.
I interpret it as, can more than 10 people work at a business as long as they're separated? Or is it only 10 people per business?
My understanding is that this does not apply to businesses. It applies to meetings, groups, group meetings of people. There's a difference. We're not closing down totally at this point. Is that correct?
Yes. And then the goal is really is a congregation of people, so assembly lines, things of that nature. And just to notice that, be cognizant of your staff. If there's not a reason to have 10 people in a tight room, don't put them in there. If they're in an assembly line, we're not with this resolution intending to shut down factories. More importantly, just intending to people to say, be cognizant of your staff and don't put them in the same room together if possible.
From Cheyenne Hughes, what if childcare centers do not close but use a skeleton crew? Have they ordered childcare centers to close?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think they can stay open. You know, we had one of the members of our staff, she, my wife walked by and she was crying, and she's pregnant, and she was terrified because she's pregnant and she's terrified that she's going to get this disease. The safest people out there are children. It doesn't seem to be causing difficulty with pregnant women at this time. The, you know, we always take precautions for pregnant women because you never know, but there's no evidence that this is causing miscarriages or anything of that nature. The people at risk are people who have compromised immune systems, like our city attorney, that's why she's at home, people, the sight of the dais, we should all be at home.
Did you just point it, Ken?
I did not skip you, Mr. Chris.
You know, this is controversial. I didn't think we had the, remember we had the Jerk Ordinance? Right?
I'm scared to invoke that right now.
Well, there's limits to what we can do. Mr. Chris was elected. The, you know, I'm making jokes about that, but I want to tell everybody, I am astonished how well we're all working together, how hard the staff is working, how hard the council is working. I am so proud of this city, I could burst at times. The only thing that seems to be going bad is my wife is not happy with me being here. And, you know, she's got a point. I don't know how to balance that. But if you're 65, you should not be out, and we're breaking that rule. I don't know how not to break that rule, but that's the way it is. So in answer to the question, yes, the childcare centers can stay open. I think they should stay open. Yeah, there's risks to it, but we can't, I think the risks of not having childcare are greater. I do not want to see a situation where kids are left at home unsupervised. And if we don't take into account that that will happen, I think we're being negligent. And the staff that's not used, are they eligible for unemployment? I'm not sure of the answer. I think they are. We're going, we're taking extreme measures to get everybody compensated that has been laid off as a result of this. And by the end of the week, we'll have a plan in place, even if you can get laid off. So we'll see where that is.
There's a couple of information on there, and I'm not absolutely certain. Tomorrow, we'll have it fully vetted and up on our websites. But EDD, from what I understand, there's opportunities for disability insurance to be used in this instance, right? If you are displaced from work, as well as unemployment insurance as well. So there's a number of resources out there. Our staff is currently vetting those, and we'll have those uploaded online soon.
Sarah Segura? Segura? Yes, churches are limited to 10 people. That's, and I know how difficult that is for a lot of churches. I mean, imagine the terror of these pastors that have small congregations, are just getting by every week as it is. Yes, we understand how terrifying this is. We're doing everything we can to find funding. We've got people working every single day, every second of the day, attempting to solve those problems, and hopefully we'll have it answered by the end of the week.
I would add too, we're going to have a remote site installed and an actual local pastor is helping us with that, to actually, they can do remote church, I don't know what else to put it, but--
Is John Irving helping us with that, right?
Yeah, John Irving's helping us out with that, so--
Streaming, right.
Yeah, streaming church. So they can schedule times so that they can stream to their parishioners, hopefully continue that continuity of service.
Just so it's clear to everybody what that means is we will assist churches in actually telestreaming their service, will provide the equipment. Actually, John--
is helping us with that to actually, they can do remote church, I don't know what else to put it, but a live church.
Is John Irving helping us with that?
Yeah, John Irving's helping us out with that. So yeah, streaming, streaming church. So they can schedule times so that they can stream to their parishioners, hopefully continue that continuity of service.
Just so it's clear to everybody what that means is we will assist churches in actually telesstreaming their service, will provide the equipment, actually John Irving's providing the equipment. It's amazing how the community's coming together on this. But we also recognize that for a lot of congregations, they may not have the Wi-Fi setups at home to do this. You know, a year from now, that wouldn't be a problem. We'd have Wi-Fi in every neighborhood and be available to everybody. But for right now, that is a problem. It's also a problem for, you know, we should be paying attention to the inequality of how things are distributed in these types of emergencies. One of them is Wi-Fi coverage. You know, what about the kids going home, being sent home to learn at home, homeschooling, but they don't have Wi-Fi? We understand that those problems exist out there. We're working very hard at resolving them. That's why we've got an EOC. Jennifer Samples, should distribution centers close? I don't quite know what you mean by...
What?
No, there's no, that's the last thing we want to have close. I mean, what we cannot have is the entire social fabric of the country stop because quite frankly, I don't think anybody knows how to start it up again. Distribution centers are probably the most important thing to stay open at this time. The, what day programs are closing down is up to the individual business at this point. You know, the, and they've got, they've got very difficult decisions to make. I mean, the people who are working with the older population, they're at risk. They're taking huge risks and going to work. And, you know, when you go to the store and you see the person checking your groceries, you might want to thank them because they are taking an enormous risk being there every single day and taking care of our needs. The amazing thing about this crisis is the number of really quality, good people that have come to the surface. And very, there's been very few people that violate the jerk rule. I'm just really thrilled.
I got a note here, Mayor, just, I keep, been paying attention to my texts because it's emergency. I just got a note that Spectrum is offering free Wi-Fi for 60 days to low-income students returning home from college and things of that nature. So just a plug for them doing the right thing.
Wow, how cool is that? That's great. Everybody be sure to thank Spectrum. That is a huge gift. I mean, that solves a lot of problems for a lot of people. This is a good question from Tony Blythe. As a field cable tech, should I, should we not be going into houses where seniors, retirement homes, things of that nature? That is, again, is an individual decision of the consumer, whether or not they want to let you in the house. I know that our house, my wife, has shut it down essentially. It's harder to get into the house than it is into my, it's just hard to get into our house right now. She's being very careful.
I would add, Mayor, if you do, social distance and good hygiene, right? Social distance and good hygiene is key.
That's right. Either way.
Yeah, whether you run into somebody in the grocery store or you go to service their home, social distance, hygiene. That's the key to solving, helping this problem.
You know, the thing we again want to emphasize, there isn't any reason for anybody to get sick. Two simple things, wash your hands constantly and don't touch your face. Now, have I been able to go an hour without touching my face? No, I haven't. I'm working real hard at it, but it's really hard. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be trying to accomplish that. So the answer to the question is it's up to the individual homeowner whether or not you should go in. Obviously hospice centers, we don't want them to shut their doors and unfortunately we may need them, put it bluntly.
But they are modifying the visitations right now, Mayor. I just went recently and they're only letting one person in per room and you have to be a family member.
To the hospice center?
Yeah, at AV. You have to be a family member and it can only be one person, one visitor per room. That was as of three hours ago.
I know they're not letting me see my mother, so. But you know, Mark Bozegian sent me a text today and he was talking about his parents, that it's getting really lonely for people who are having to stay home. Call your parents, call your friends, check and see if they need anything. This is, this is the time we should be thinking almost exclusively about others because that's the only way this is going to work. I haven't heard anything about CDC saying kids are at risk, have you?
No.
Yeah, anybody? What, everything the government's telling us is kids are safe. I mean, they can, they can get a cold, but they're not going to die from this.
But they are carriers.
They are carriers. That's absolutely correct. Cody Jackson says we have potential students that meet with us at our college. Does ordinance apply to that? The ordinance applies to groups, did you see how I just touched my face? The ordinance applies to groups of 10. You cannot have a group of 10 come together and meet. That's, it's that simple. It would be better, I mean, what some cities are now doing is they're canceling meetings of any kind. We don't, we're trying to keep this as minimal as possible and still protect the families of Lancaster. Did I touch, did something?
No, you're touching a lot of papers that other people have handed you.
That's right. Hey, you guys wash your hands? Chris Humphries, would public wash stations be a possibility for the city to provide in high-frequency areas? We are working right now at developing hand washing stations for the homeless and we're going to put them wherever they're most likely to be used. But as you can imagine, every city in America is having these demands all at once and so it's difficult. If anybody has an industrial hydrostatic sprayer out there, we'd like to borrow it. If you've got three or four of them, we'd like to borrow three or four of them. But as you can see, there's a lot of equipment needs that I think part of the problem is just not making it known to people, we need them. Or you can be a jerk like the guys on eBay charging $10,000 for one. But that's also happening. Oh, please don't do that. That was facetious, by the way. Cody Jackson, we have 26 students and instructors meeting at night in one room. Yes, you need to separate. You cannot have 26 people meeting in one room regardless of the reason. Yes, separate. Answer to the question. What?
Do two or three meetings.
Well... That would be, that wouldn't comply with the ordinance, but you know, the best way to do this is just keep six feet of separation from everybody. That could work too. That's hard to do. I stopped by one of the local gyms that hadn't closed yet. They closed at noon. And it seems to me if this thing goes on, we're going to be able to develop procedures that, that put people back into living a life with some level of security. And that could be just by separation and having employees with the hand sanitizer cleaning things. In the city, we are, we've ordered a, this stuff that sanitizes everything and it lasts for a week or so at a time. But that's why we need the hydrostatic sprayers. As soon as we have the equipment and the product is delivered, we're going to see how best to utilize that through the city. Sherry Shifter Banyar? Is it just a matter of time before everyone is going to be on lockdown in LA County? Several counties are already doing this. When will we? That will be the last thing we do, meaning lock, you understand what that means. That means essentially you've declared martial law and nobody's allowed out of their homes. You know, there'll be curfews, things of that nature. I do not foresee that happening at this time. And I think the cities that are doing that are overreacting, quite frankly. Remember what we're attempting to accomplish here is we're attempting to lower the curve, meaning this is going to spread and it's going to spread through the country. And there's not a whole lot we can do about that, but what we want to avoid is peaks that overload the healthcare system. If somebody needs medical treatment, we want to maintain an environment where they can get medical treatment. That is not as easy as people think. There are places in Italy that if you're 80 years old, you do not get treated at all because they just don't have the resources to treat you. That age will come down if the disease spreads at a greater rate. That is what we're attempting to avoid here and I think we're going to successfully be able to avoid that. I was also encouraged with the president's announcement today that they actually have a vaccine in a clinical trial that is incredibly fast, that has leapfrogged all kinds of regulations to get there. And, you know, we will get through this, we will solve this and we will solve it in America. There just isn't any doubt in my mind that that's what's going to occur. But no, I do not foresee a time where the city's on lockdown. I hope I don't eat my words, but I certainly, that has not been on the radar, even, even in our worst-case scenario. Paul Kennison, what services will be made available for homeless, including those pushed outside the city limits? Hey, that was pretty good, the way he snuck in, pushed out. That was good. You know, in regards to our homeless, we have, the last census had the city of Lancaster with about 900 and some odd homeless people. We have successfully built a facility that will house half of those people. There is no other city in America that has made that much headway in regards to caring for their homeless. But the policies of this city of not wanting people to send their homeless to us remain in effect. And, you know, I'm sorry if that's draconian, but especially now. We need to do whatever's necessary to stop the migration of that specific community because they have the lowest healthcare available to them and therefore they would be at greater risk of spreading this. That's all I can say at this point. I want to know how long Lancaster will wait to lockdown or have a shelter in place? One case, 20 cases, 50 cases? We will do the best practices. We have hired the best people available to advise us on this and they are not recommending this. And Orange County, it also says, "Orange County lockdown today." That's not accurate. Orange County has forbid groups from congregating, but the county is not on lockdown. Is that correct, Allison?
Orange County has, as of today, prohibited all group gatherings of any size outside the household. So households continue to reside together, of course, but all other gatherings of any size have been prohibited. So we're not quite on lockdown, but it's darn close.
Are they closing businesses?
Yes.
Did they close the law firm?
I'm sorry, did they close the what?
Did they close your law firm?
My building is closed. We are working from home.
No kidding.
Not kidding at all.
I understand the governor is going to be making decisions county by county depending upon trigger moments that they have. And whether the governor makes those decisions or the Department of Public Health makes those decisions, we are preparing in the EOC for the eventual, or potential, maybe eventual lockdown, whatever you want to call it, and how to deliver services that way.
That is interesting. In answer to the question, we will follow the best practices that the medical professionals tell us we should be following. And they don't have a number of cases when something triggers. The idea is to stop people from getting it in the first place rather than waiting for a large number to do it. You also, we also have to pay attention to the fact that when you start closing down society, people get at risk for all kinds of things. There has to be a balancing that takes place. Are we exposing people to greater risks with the, with the measures we take? And, you know, we're all in this together and none of us have a lot of experience at it. So we appreciate your ideas, we appreciate your help. And the answer to that question is we don't know yet, right? Thank you. What is the penalty if you violate the group of 10 rule or ordinance? As of right now, we're not arresting people, but that will change. I think that's probably the best way to answer that.
I would also add, Mayor, that the penalty is potentially infecting the members of that group and the family members of that group and the potential family members who are in a vulnerable class and them dying. That's the penalty.
Good point. Recognize, you know, let's take responsibility for what we're doing here. If you were the person that has brought more than 10, brought 10 people together, you may be killing somebody. I mean, it's that dire. Jesus Bernal, will there be testing sites? Yes, there will be testing sites. I just don't know when. Right now, it looks like we may be one of the first cities to get them, but Catherine Barker is working on that for us and more people than her are making that decision. But I'm encouraged by what she has to say.
I would add, Mayor, that not only is that, we're looking in part, right now, identifying locations in which if this test does come available and if there's mass testing, to actually have sites in which you are prepared and ready to handle that mass testing from a traffic perspective, public safety perspective, as well as inoculations when that day comes. As how do you get mass inoculations? We've been working and having conversations about that now.
Jason, when we do find out the when and wheres that it is, it's my understanding Lamar offered their digital billboards to post that information.
Correct. We have, we are utilizing those billboards as we speak. I don't know if they're up yet. They will be up very shortly. First, directing people to the one site so they get the right information. If and when it comes, we have that tool available to us to make sure that is a notification opportunity for the community as well.
Mayor, we need to make sure we publicly thank Lamar for offering that public service. I think that was a great reach out today.
I agree. Thank you. So we got a question from Fran. Hi, Fran, how are you? We miss you today.
Hey, you, Fran.
She'd like to know about feeding the homeless and hungry. The, you know, that's, that's an ongoing problem and it's an ongoing concern. At the moment, quite frankly, what we're most concerned about is feeding the seniors. A large number of people rely on the senior center to eat every day. They're doing a really good job of doing drive-through for that. We're going to have to be looking at home delivery services pretty quickly. The, but yes, we understand the plight, but we are also prioritizing.
I would add, the CDBG, the resolution that you're going to approve tonight, the CDBG funding is identified an earmark for feeding services of seniors specifically or potentially with partners in the community.
In regards to feeding people, you know, a lot of people don't understand that there are children in this community who eat at school and that's the only place they eat. So the schools have been working with us really well on making lunches available even though the school is closed. But, you know, there's all kinds of issues out there that I don't think anybody really thought about until what we do every day stopped. And that's one of them. Yes, the skateboard park will remain open. At the end of the day, you can't take kids, take them out of school and tell them to stay home. They won't. They won't. I would rather have a supervised situation for them that is marginally safe rather than having latchkey children. So no, the skate park will... So no, the skate park will remain open until we decide that it is a bigger threat than the relief valve it provides. Mario Sal wants to know, Mayor Paris, are you working closely with the city of Palmdale Mayor since we are so close to each other? Our city managers are working very closely together. We're in communication with each other. We are sharing ideas with each other, but we definitely have different procedures as to how to handle this crisis. The philosophy of the city of Lancaster is we will rely on no one other than ourselves. That's why we have our own doctors, we have our own endomologist, is that what it's called?
Epidemiologist.
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 Before this crisis is over, I'm going to learn how to say that word. And so I want to be clear about that. We believe in resiliency in this city. In order to be resilient, we have to be responsible for our own path. So far, I am satisfied with the path that we are taking. You know, I wish everybody could come see the EOC in operation. It's an amazing sight to see all these people working that hard. But then again, that would violate the reason for the EOC if we invited you.
Rex, I know you stated earlier this year that how you and your family feed about 500 homeless children, different things like that. So for the churches and different entities up here that's been feeding the homeless and those that need, what advice would you give them as we kind of tighten up the reins on bringing in the social? Because we don't want people to think that we're just totally discarding anybody that's homeless or anything.
Well, I don't think we're discarding anybody, but I do want the community to understand that we are in a mode where we have to make priorities and we are prioritizing. How well we do that will determine how few people are adversely affected by this. My wife and I have been talking about that program because the church we operate through has stopped their bus ministry. And as a result, we now know that those kids that we were, that were getting fed on Sunday now are not getting fed. So, you know, it's a difficult process. How well we solve this is going to be determined by how well we as a community come together and how well we work with our neighbors and find out what our neighbors need. If somebody's sick, don't make them go to the pharmacy to get their medication. Go get it for them. Leave it on the doorstep for them. Limit the contact. But this isn't a situation where we get to wait for somebody to ask us what to do. We have to be asking our neighbors what we can do to help.
Right.
The, you know, I don't have any doubt that when this, when we reach the end of this, this journey we're on, we're going to be a stronger city, we're going to be a more loving city, this is going to be a better place to live because of the decisions we make today and how well we work with each other and how well we try to help each other. This is not the time to sit at home and not call to find out if somebody needs you. There are people out there that need you. Find out who they are. Is that all the questions at this point? By Friday, we will be in a situation that if you call the emergency operations center, we will be able to direct resources to you. That is the goal. This doesn't have to be a disaster that you bear alone. This is something that we will help you through. We will get you to the other side of it somehow. And we're here for you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the speaker cards came in after we did NB1. Do you think it would be appropriate to redo NB1?
Well, I guess we could. Is there a motion to approve NB1?
I'll make that motion again to approve NB1.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. And it passes unanimously.
I'll move we adopt Resolution 20-09 NB2.
I second that. Let's vote. It passes unanimously.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 20-10 NB3.
Second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
And I'll move we adopt NB4 and adopt ordinance number 1073.
And it's unanimous. Where are we on the ordinance regarding layoffs? Are we working on that?
We're evaluating that. I think we're looking at from an operational, well, there's two things. One is the legalities of it, two is the operational component of it. It's a challenge when you look at it operationally to say, you have to continue to pay somebody because you have a company that goes bankrupt or you have an employee that gets fired, right? There's some operational challenges with that, but we're working through them to, you know, and have that conversation with you about what that means, what that looks like.
The place I'm hoping we can reach is that the employer contacts the EOC and we're able to get funding to them so that people keep getting their paychecks.
Well, I think there's two, there's two answers we're trying to find out, too. It's not only that, but it's also what resources the EDD has, unemployment has, things of that nature. There will be resources for these displaced workers that should not be borne solely on the business owner if those resources are available themselves. So we are researching those resources. If they do, then we'll try to figure out a balance there that we can work with the business owner and say, you have a legitimate business challenge and you can't continue to afford to pay your employees, here are the resources that will allow your employees to be successful, at least continue their lives for a period of time until we're over this. As well as the business assistance to the business itself because it's, the businesses are going to be hurting as well, not just the employees.
What I'm looking for is efficiency and making certain people aren't losing everything.
Correct, absolutely.
And it may be more efficient to deal directly with the employee. It just seems to me it's probably more efficient if we went through the employer, but we have to get a plan up and running quickly before people, I mean, most people live paycheck to paycheck. Okay. We got everything now? We're encouraged by the citizens' commitment to helping us come up with ideas to resolve this and to get through this and to work with this. It's our intention that lines of communication remain open. You have an idea, call us. So far, it's working 100% better than I anticipated. It's been an amazing experience and I think it'll continue to be that. Okay. I guess we don't have to, do we have to worry about public comment?
Do you have the public comment?
We do need to call for it.
Okay.
But I think we've already gotten most of it.
City clerk?
At this time, we will receive public comments submitted either by email or through Facebook. State law does prohibit counsel from taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
And before we finish this out, I want somebody working on how do we keep these churches open? I mean, not open physically. I mean, so they don't lose their buildings and everything they've worked for. And I understand that that has particular challenges because of the separation argument between church and state. But at the same time, I think it's important we recognize the churches are vital part of our community and we cannot afford to lose even one.
Right. We've heard that loud and clear.
Thank you.
One note while we're waiting for the notes to come up. There's been a lot of requests come to City Hall for certain services. One that we get a lot of is water, right? I mean, I know when my kids drink water out of the tap, they say, "Ooh," right? But taps, water is potable and drinkable. So just if you're listening out there, understand that bottled water is not a requirement. We have tap water, we have sinks, we have all those things necessary to provide us the nut water that we need for nourishment. So from a standpoint of what is requested now, if you're in a location, if you're maybe homeless or other things like that, it's a different story. But, you know, be cognizant of that when those requests come through because we do receive a lot of them.
And let's be honest, they're filling those bottles from the tap. There's an argument that the plastic water bottle is probably worse for you than the tap water because of the plastic chemicals that leach into the water when it gets hot.
Not only that, with the shortage, Mr. Mayor, they were saying it's best for some of us just to get a filter and put it on our faucets and it's just as good for the shortage.
Although, you know, I used to be the guy that filtered all the water and then I found out my teeth were going bad because, and my bones were going bad because you need the calcium.
Calcium.
You need the minerals that are in the water. I'd drink tap water. We've handled the store situation. The stores are complying, they're giving time just for seniors. Mr. Lopez is 72 years old and he wants to know if he can still ride his bike outside. That's pretty cool, I think. Wait a minute. That's not much older than me, is it? How did that happen? Yes, ride your bike outside. You know, you're actually safer outside than anywhere. Just stay away from people. If you stay away from people, better to be outside, fewer pathogens. Apollino, Toledo, what measures are being done to reach out and inform Spanish-speaking Not enough. Do we have a, at least on the coronavirus information on the website, do we have that in Spanish?
We are translating things as we speak. All of the flyers that we've done, we've done two-sided Spanish and English and we're also going to be on Cafe Colmeche tomorrow morning at 7:30 to address it with the Spanish community.
Wonderful. Thank you. Lisa Norris, how long is the 10-person restriction in place? Question mark, end of March? Question mark. I suspect it's going to be longer than March, may even go into April. The anticipation is that this thing is going to be with us at least until August. The, what you're experiencing now is just the 14 days in an effort to flatten that curve out. It'll loosen up in 14 days, but there's still going to be significant restrictions. So Tanya Campos doesn't think I'm taking this seriously. Well, I'm sorry, but I can't imagine how I could take this more seriously than I am. She's concerned about the skateboard park. There's a difference between 10 people skating at the park and 10 people sitting in a room with no separation between them. Big difference. But until we hear otherwise, the skateboard park, the skateboard park remains open. Just to clarify, will we eventually be arresting people for groups larger than 10? It's a possibility, is the best I can say. It depends on how this thing unfolds. We're going to do everything we can to avoid arresting anybody unless they're a threat to the public safety. So it changes daily. You want to keep in mind, we don't want to fill the jails because then they become a breeding ground for the disease. Everything is being reinvented as we go with this situation. But we expect people to follow the law, as uncomfortable as it is. And hopefully, we're not going to have to have some consequences for it. But I think everybody in this city recognizes we will do whatever's necessary to protect the hard-working families that live here. I have a request to announce that congregations can still make their tithes through the electronic means that are being set up, and that's true. More importantly, if you love your church, now is the time you want to make certain you're doing your tithing because they have never been under such financial stress as they are at the present time. Larry, this, somebody's got to work on their handwriting. Discarret, is that who it is? How can I volunteer to deliver food to seniors? At the moment, we do not have an organized procedure to do that, but what we are suggesting you do is talk to the seniors you know, arrange to go to the store for them. It's pretty simple at that point. There's going to be volunteer mechanisms gearing up in order to take advantage of the people wanting to volunteer. But right now, it's incumbent upon you to reach out to your neighbors and ask who needs help.
I would add, AV Partners for Health is doing some senior feeding and kind of Meals on Wheels type of thing. I would recommend that they go to AV Partners for Health. Yes. And we're looking to them to do our senior program as well.
Okay, good. You know, I was at the senior center the other day and I was watching all the people drive-through and it occurred to me, in and out, they're masters at giving people sacks of food in their car. I mean, they're masters at it. So I suggested that they call them and see if they can come over and help with the way they do it, which got me thinking that there's a lot of things in this community that some people do extremely well that can cross domains into needs that are presently there. If you see that you have an ability to improve how we're handling this, do not stay silent. This is a community effort. We are not going to solve this for you. We are going to get through this with you, is, I think, the best way to phrase it. Patty White wants to know, any info on the positive person from Lancaster? I don't quite understand that question.
The positive test.
Oh, the positive test. Turns out, wasn't us. There was not a positive test in Lancaster today or any time before this. That's why the Department of Public Health took it off. Mayor, I thought you were making reference that I wasn't positive enough. I was feeling bad. Jeffrey Bermuda's wants to know, why didn't you wear green today? The vice mayor suggests that maybe I am. I don't think that is quite in the spirit of St. Patrick's Day. So do you guys want to hear my tale a while? So I got green ties to go to the White House for this St. Patrick's Day party they were throwing. Story of my life. What happens? This comes along. No party, no tie, but I guess I should have wore it today. What?
And no White House.
And no White House. You know, one of the things the city does have that most cities don't have is we have a lobbying group in DC working with the White House right now to make certain that we get the federal subsidies that are available to our people. And I'm really proud of them. Anybody who knows Chris Garcia, tell him thank you. Anybody who knows Buck McKeon, tell him thank you. We've got people working very hard for the city of Lancaster. This is a good question. Jesus Salazar and Stephanie Brunel, how will crime be stopped at this time? We actually have less crime at the moment, don't we?
You know, this is, anytime you have crime increase or decrease at any time, we're on the lookout for it. We're deploying extra bodies out in the field. The sheriff has directed all of our detective division bodies that are nonessential, the court bodies, well, the court's closed, and they're actually fielding units throughout the county, extra units out there throughout the county. And we keep an eye on it and we monitor our trends and we get on it immediately and we'll address those issues as they come up, but we are, we are filling more cars. up, but we are fielding more cars, especially during the day hours where we have shopping centers and to have a visible presence there to just fly the flag and assure people, make sure things keep going as smoothly as we can. So we are deploying more, watching it, and we get on stuff immediately, as always.
For those of you out there who have criminal inclinations, now is not the time. There will be zero patience. We expect everybody to be a productive, helpful part of solving this problem. Did I say that well enough? I mean, usually I just say we're going to hurt you, but--
Yeah, you did. And if I may, you've made a huge point about how people are heroes, these folks who work in the grocery stores, and everybody has a piece in this. And if you think back to World War II, you had people on the front line, you had Rosie the River, you had women flying planes overseas. Some people, your role in this war is to stay home. That's your way to be a hero, stay home and protect the vulnerable people, and this is a great community, and they'll come together, and it'll be, it'll work out fine.
It is ironic that the best thing we can do is stay home, and just how hard that is to do. It's ironic, I think. I got an anonymous, doesn't feel homeless are being adequately helped. They are not. He feels the mayor is pushing homeless into streets to starve and suffer. He is not. What I don't want to do is sugarcoat this for anybody. I don't want to, at any point, mislead anybody. Yes, the homeless are going to have the greatest consequences of this because they have the least health care available to them, and the environmental strain on their physiology is such that they are at risk. There isn't any question about that. I do not want homeless from other areas coming here. I've made that so crystal clear, I don't think there's any question about it. The other side of this coin is there is no other city in the state that has, in the last year, been so proactive that we now have housing for half of the homeless that have been identified in the city of Lancaster. You know, but what I'm not going to do is act like everything is hunky-dory for everybody in the city. It is not. We are at risk. We are in time of crisis, and how well we get through it will be determined by how well we all come together on it. Now, do we actually have plans in place to help the homeless that are not in the housing? We do. We're waiting for the resources to get here. But, you know, our biggest priority today was making certain that if we have to open a field hospital, we can do so. You know, it's not easy to set up 100, 200 beds in a field hospital overnight. Where's the best place to do that? Who's going to be in charge of it? What resources do we need to get in for that? That's what we were working on today. So, you know, I guess the question I have for the person who wrote that, what did you do for the homeless today? What did you do to help somebody today? We're working 24/7 to do that. And right now, our priorities are what they've always been. Take care of the children first, take care of the elderly people second, take care of the rest of the family after that. That's the priorities that have been in this city from day one, and they will continue to be that. Anything, anybody want to add?
I just want to say, you know, many of you know I'm a pastor first before I'm a councilman, and one of the things that I heard our mayor saying reminded me of a text, a scripture talked about when Israel was getting ready to rebuild the wall, and they were rebuilding with inferior product. They had burnt bricks, and it was an impossible task. They got the task accomplished in record time because everyone built in front of their house and connected with their neighbor. I think the most powerful thing that was said today was, take care of yourself and your neighbor. And if everyone has that neighborly, which is our first commandment, love your neighbor as yourself, one of our commandments, I believe we'll be okay, because it will cause a connection that will cause us to connect to each other if everyone takes care of the right and left of yourself. It will cause us -- number two, I believe that we can't allow fear to overtake us, Mayor. We have to be precautious. We have to take precautions, we have to be aware, we have to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do, but we cannot allow fear to paralyze us nor cause us to make, you know, crazy decisions. And I am so excited about what this mayor -- and I'm proud of you, Rex, and the council, what we have done. I'm proud of our city manager and what I saw today, and all of how everybody is coming together, all of the pastors. I talked to over 100 pastors this morning, and 90% of them were on board in whatever they could do, opening up their churches for streaming helps, and it's just amazing how this community is coming together, what I just spoke of, as a neighbor. And if we can continue that neighborly love and lay aside our petty differences and come together for the greater good, we're going to come out on top on this. So I'm glad to be a Lancasteran. I really am. That's my new word.
We're prouder here. The biggest crime right now that anybody could commit is if you are sick, stay home. If you don't, you are the -- you're committing a crime in so many different ways. Do not be going to the pharmacy and standing in line to get a prescription. Ask somebody to go get it for you. Now is the time to ask for help. Your job, if you're sick, is to stay away from people and stay home. I did have an interesting exchange on social media today where a lady was texting me that her husband was sick, and so she's making him sleep on the couch, and I suggested that you were making him infect the rest of the house. She should be sleeping on the couch. We want to think about those things. If you're sick, don't infect your family, if you can avoid it. Isolate, isolate in the home. Hopefully, this just turns out to be a bad dream. And people are asking, are we fear mongering? Are we overreacting? I hope so. I sincerely hope so. But what we're seeing in Italy and what we're seeing in Iran is we're not acting fast enough, is the best I can say. I mean, I cannot -- it's unacceptable to me that there will come a time where people are denied medical care because we don't have the resources and that they're triaged based on age. But that could happen if we don't follow these rules. So with all that pleasant tidings, I think that we'll bring the meeting to a conclusion. We are here for you. You have questions, call us. We have the website up and running. What I don't want to have is situations where people are sitting at home and are suffering from fears that go unresolved because you don't know who to ask. Call us, we'll find the right person that can answer your questions. We'll even, very shortly, be in a situation that we can actually direct volunteers to helping you. But this is the time where either a strong, united family, or we are not. I'm betting that we are. So, good night. We will have periodic updates and virtual meetings as this crisis continues. Thank you.